Okay, good evening. My name is Marsha East and I call the meeting of the Forest Park Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of November 20th, 2023 to order. The Planning and Zoning Commission is the recommending body to the council in this role. There are two documents that we use as our guides. One is the Forest Park zoning ordinance and the second is the Forest Park Comprehensive Plan. As a public hearing, the purpose here is to gather testimony and evidence to make finding of facts, determine how we believe the local zoning ordinance applies to those facts. Our goal is to hear all relevant facts. Can we do a roll call, please?
Um, McKenna Hibbits.
Here.
Ryan Russ.
Here.
Kieran McBride, here. Scott Whitphone.
Paul Price.
Here.
Marsha East.
Here. Okay, thank you. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes from our last meeting of September 18th, 2023?
Yes.
Someone like to make a motion to pass those minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
Thank you. All right, this evening we had two items on our agenda and the way we'll run the meeting, I will ask the petitioner to make their presentation, the commission. We'll have the first opportunity to ask questions before public comment and again after public comment. Public comment is in two forms. Are there any written comments tonight, Steve?
No.
Okay. For in-person comments, we'll use the microphone over there. When called upon, you'll come up to the microphone, you'll provide your name and your address and we'll ask that you limited to three minutes and I'll use my phone to time that. If the comments have already been expressed, I'll ask from you to refrain from repeating, but you're certainly allowed to say, "I agree with so-and-so or such-and-such." For those of you who want to make comments tonight, I'll ask you to be sworn in and so that means you'll need to raise your right hand. If anybody wants to make any comments this evening, do you solemnly swear that the testimony that you will give is the truth? If so, please say, "I do."
I do.
Thank you. All right, first item. PZC 2023-08, request for variation for 7713 Wilcox Street. May I have motion open and enter the packet into the record?
So, second.
All of them, please.
All right. Thank you.
The petitioner, I believe, would be John. Please tell us about your proposal.
Thank you and good evening, Adam Chair and Commissioners. My name is John Shees. I have a place of business at 905 Home Avenue in Oak Park and I am an architect and presenting the approval on behalf of the applicant. Sitting right behind me is George Rosca. He is my client. He is the builder and applicant and property owner and next to him is Lisa Palermo and she's with the local realtor and she will be giving some testimony tonight. So with that, I'll move on to the presentation. Feel free to stop during the presentation and ask questions. It's very casual. I wanted to let you know what we've done so far. We've had discussions with village staff, discussions with the applicant, builder and property owner. I call this Plan Commission, Planning and Zoning. We understand that there's a referral to council and council will ultimately involve on the application. I always like to throw out the data so that it's clear. Twenty-five by one-twenty-five, the current zone is R1. We are not proposing to change the zoning and keep it as an R1. We will be asking for some relief and I'll list that in a little bit. The proposal is for one single-family home with two parking spaces and a garage off the rear alley. Here is Exhibit A. I have a typed version, a printed version of this that actually has the addresses. Adam Chair, is it okay if I distribute these?
Right. You have any?
There's something about the address.
Oh, okay.
The block of record.
Yes, it's the block of record on Exhibit A. The coating on this is the blue lots, the kind of ones that look like glass. Those are non-compliant lots. More specifically, they are non-25-foot wide lots, which makes them non-compliant in an R1 zone. The orange lots are the compliant, they're 25 or greater. And the green lot is the subject lot, the property at 7713. The number on this is quite interesting. I'll get to it a little bit later, but I will, it's worthy to note just by visual, you know, which are the conforming and which are not.
We're gonna have public comment later.
I'm sorry, what's your question?
We cannot see, could we have the paper printed out?
You can't see?
Well, it's with our glasses.
There's some receipts up here.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Please go ahead. Thank you.
The relief sought in this application is for lot width from 50 feet to 25 feet, lot area from 6,250 to 3,125, lot coverage from 40% to 45%, and west yard, side yard setback from 3 feet to 2 feet. All of the metrics are compliant. I would, in my narrative, I mentioned that the relief two, three, and four are an outgrowth of the 50-foot lot width. You know, you can see that, you know, the lot area, which is a percentage of the lot width, is impacted by the reduced lot, as is the lot coverage and the side area as well. So I'm jumping right into the standards for zoning variation. This is a, I'm not going to repeat what I wrote in the packet, but I'd like to just give you a sense of bullet points, if you will, and that way we can have a conversation around that. The first standard is how was the hardship created? And in staff's report and through my findings back in around 2010, as a result of some of the things that were going on in housing in 2010, the zoning ordinance was, actually the zoning map, was amended to include this whole area as an R1. And that's why you see so many non-compliant lots that are not 50 feet. With the R1 district, 50-foot frontage is the minimum. And so therefore, when the zoning was changed from the previous zoning to an R1, all of a sudden those zoning lots, including the 7713, were impacted, essentially made non-compliant. There were other, specific to 7713, there were other things that made it non-compliant, the rear yard setback, the side yard setback, the fact that it had a curb cut off of Wilcox and not up the alley. All those things contributed, but they were, that's how, according to the data I found, the hardship was created. See if I missed anything. And I mentioned that I would get back to some of the metrics. In the slide that I previously showed as Exhibit A, we showed a total of 26 properties. Twenty-two percent of those properties are non-compliant, uh, 22, no, 22 properties, not 22%. It's more like 80, 80% of those within that snapshot are non-compliant. So the next slide will tell you about, asks about unique physical conditions. And I think that the logic flows that if you take a zone district that and reclassify it as a second zone district and one of the primary metrics is the lot width, 50 feet, the hardship just automatically happens. It makes a whole bunch of non-compliance. Where does the hardship grow in non-compliance? And I hope I'm not sounding a little too professorial, but if you think about a property that is 25 feet wide, it gets zoned non-compliant, the property owner's rights get very limited. You can no longer do what you could before because you're non-compliant. The statutes say that you have to either maintain its non-compliance or demolish it and build something that's compliant. In this case, you can build nothing. Because when the minimum is 25 feet, your only relief, and it's a very great relief, is to buy up your neighbor's property, to make theirs a 25-foot, which in some cases would make their property non-compliant. You see the hardship?
Just a quick clarification, you mean 50 feet wide, right?
Yes, yeah, going from 50 to 25. I was rolling through the numbers pretty fast, but you're right. And the third standard is about not self-created hardships. And I think you could see in the logic that I mentioned in steps one and two, it would be almost impossible for my client to have created that hardship. Number four, denied substantial rights. So we submitted a property survey and the survey says that the neighbor to the east, their primary structure of their house is 1.38 from their west property line. And that was known to my client, it was known to us, and that's why we chose to leave that as compliant. There was no relief sought for that east property line because they're already 1.38. But to this standard, they have that right to keep their property at that and so do many others along the block. There are many properties there that are not 3 feet from their property line. Most likely, not, we're not, I'm not pointing fingers, I'm just showing some facts where due to the rezone, it created some of these as well. And this is where the numbers are right. Out of 26 properties, 84% of them are non-comforming to some degree. Special privilege, that's one of the standards that we need to show that we are not asking for special privilege, we're merely asking for the same privileges that are granted to neighbors. And I think this, along with other facts you all hear tonight, will support that fact. Title and purpose. This one's an interesting one. I hope you read the packet because we went section by section. We first went to the comprehensive plan. It calls for a single-family home located in harmony with neighbors. I think our architectural drawings in the application shows that we are in harmony with the comprehensive plan. Building height is in harmony, building codes, in other words, we didn't ask for any relief in any of those. Not building height, not bulk, not density, none of those were requested. We also believe that the structure is in harmony with neighbors. It was designed specifically to fit in. The front setback is compliant, it has a front porch like other neighbors, so we were certainly looking to keep that in harmony. And because of all that, the character, the fact that it's used as a single-family home and its front door is there, we eliminated the curb cut on Wilcox Garage in the back, keeps it harmonious with its neighbors. The essential character. Property values, I said C letter, but we actually have the person here. I can ask her to talk now, give myself a little break, and she can talk about the impact of this development on local properties. Lisa?
Do you want me to go off there?
That's the time to make a move.
Hi.
Do you want my address?
101 North Oak Park Avenue, Rixier Hathaway. I'm basically here to talk about property values and the impact. In my professional experience, the impact of a high-quality property will not negatively impact the neighboring properties. I have never seen that. I've been in real estate for 15 years as a broker and 31 years as an appraiser, certified appraiser.
Any questions? Lisa's here, Lisa will be here in case something comes up. Thank you, Lisa. Light and ventilation. I went into some specifics on my write-up to note the fact that we were keeping the east side at code compliant and meat. We, that is certainly, in my opinion, as a licensed architect, plenty of opportunity for light now for both properties, the neighboring property and our property. I will note that on the west side, where we do ask for relief from 3 feet to 2 feet, we provided no windows. There are no windows there that gives a greater fire protection, not to mention the fact that this structure is, since it's code compliant, it has an automatic sprinkler system. So that adds to the fire protection and public safety value to the new development. It does, and it's also worthy to note that the addition, the structure to the west is at least 25 feet from our building. And we haven't measured it, but there's a 25-foot lot between our property, the subject property and the property to the west.
So John, just to clarify for board and the public, the structure is fire-rated for one hour on the interior and the exterior?
That's correct, on both sides.
Yeah.
Mr. Commissioner. So in terms of traffic, we did not do a traffic study, we didn't think one was warranted since we're going from a single-family home to a single-family home. We're not changing any dynamics there, so we don't see a negative impact to traffic. Flooding, the property, I checked the FEMA maps and the FEMA maps do not show this as a being on a floodplain or any other designation that FEMA has. So we don't see how this would impact negatively. And certainly the difference between, there is no FEMA, in other words, if FEMA were part of this review, they would not, the fact that it's going from a 50-foot lot to a 25-foot lot would not trigger any additional reviews or sprinkling on the part of FEMA, who is the designated body for reviewing flooding. Continuing on essential character of the area, public utilities. It's worthy to note that it's staying as a single-family and not increasing to multiple units that might have a greater impact. The water supply was adequate prior, but it was recently updated by the village on Wilcox, so there's a new watering. Steve could probably tell you the size. It was adequate before, but now it's been upgraded and that's the water source for the property. The sanitary sewer was not replaced, is that correct? Yeah, but it was, it was, our engineer reviewed it and said that it has capacity to handle the new structure. Health and safety, here's where I think this is an improvement, that it is code compliant where the previous property was not. I think your packet shows more detail than I did. You know, it's a tiny structure, if you got to read some of the, you know, Forest Park, unlike some communities, when property is turned over from one order to the next, they do a property inspection and it's, there's a write-up. If you were to read the write-up, you could see that there was, there were many things, many problems with the structure. It, in my opinion, after reading that, it begged demolition. As a matter of fact, I think the listing for that property, when it was sold through tax records, the agent who listed it, who's familiar in town, she knows the area, listed it for land only. Everybody understood that you couldn't really do much with the existing property. Code new, code compliant connections to electric and gas and it's worthy to note, again, a sprinkler system, automatic sprinkler system. This last standard, no other remedy. You know, sitting with my client, and I should know, I should have opened with this, but our appeal is for a retroactive zoning relief. Clearly, the property is under construction and, but if this had been done before, this requested had been before you, before construction started or today, I can't think of another reasonable relief because I think I mentioned that at the beginning. If you're non-compliant and the structure is asked to be essentially demolished, cleared up, that's not relief. There's little relief other than what I mentioned, buying neighbors' properties. And to take, if you can indulge me, take a step back. When you look at that scenario, when you look at those consequences, it's, and you think about hardship, hardship does sit on the applicant, he's the owner, he's got money at risk, but when you take, hardship isn't just about money, it's about lost opportunities. And when you look at it, in lost opportunities, I think the village as a whole, really, there's the brunt of some of that hardship. There's loss of vitality, an empty lot doesn't provide home for family, certainly tax revenues are much, much lower. And so I think, like I said, if you can indulge me, taking a step back and looking at it that way, because what is sometimes lawful is not always just and that's kind of where I'm heading with this.
Are you, I might like to open it up for the Commissioners to ask questions. I don't know if you're at?
Yeah, this is it. This is the last slide.
Okay. Commissioners, questions?
I have a few, but I think I'm gonna wait until after public comment for, to ask.
We're gonna open it up for public comment. You said there were no written comments, correct?
Correct.
So individuals who want to make public comment, I'm gonna ask you to come up to the microphone. You're gonna have to say your name and your address and you have three minutes.
I'm Steve Keating. I own the property at 7715 Wilcox. My question to all of you is, the house in the exterior version, have you all seen it? The property? Have you looked at it? It's almost finished there. They were doing some work today on the, you know, just on the border of the property, taking down some of the readying for the siding and so forth. But why, when the project is almost done, are we having a meeting for approval or some change that pushes it into, I mean, it's ridiculous. You should have known that the property was not correct when the foundation was poured. Then somebody could have said, "Well, you know, it's been inspected, you gotta change that," when it would have been somewhat easier to do it. Why now? It's a moot point. So whatever problems occurred before and whatever problems might occur in the future, all it does is set a precedent so that you can be doing this all over Forest Park anytime somebody comes after the fact and says, "Well, you know, I need this, you know, I need you to change the, you know, the amount of footage," or whatever it is, whatever problem there is with the property, "just so, you know, we can get property tax revenue." I mean, I'm all for paying taxes, but if you're gonna keep doing that, it looks a little fishy to the rest of the public that it's already pushed through. You don't need to vote, it's already done. So I'm just waiting to see who's moving in and prospectively see what the next problem's gonna be. Because I've been through this so many times with the town council, the builders, the building department, everything, that we reconsidered about staying in Forest Park. We'll see what happens. But I'm gonna warn people about what goes on in this town, about pushing stuff through without informing the public in a timely manner. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi. Kevin White, 7710 Wilcox.
Seven, what was, I'm sorry, what's your address?
7710 Wilcox Street.
Okay, thank you.
First of all, that monstrosity across the street does not work at all. It is cold, it's not warming or charming. And it's been a nightmare even for Brad, you guys hired to do the sewers that have been long awaited since 2020, to put up with the developer constantly. I wake up to them, so is everybody on the block. Second of all, it's a 25-foot lot, they knew it. You guys didn't care about the fact? Yes, the house had to be condemned. Annie died and her son Ken died in the hospital. They got it from a tax sale and I know exactly how much they paid for it. And if you look at this, they plan on taking advantage of the next property. So you can allow them to keep changing all of the property lines in Forest Park? Because that's what this says on their proposal to you. Are we gonna become San Francisco where everybody's like this? Are we gonna have the charm of Forest Park? Yards, family-friendly? Or it's gonna be super high, look what's already happened to Oak Park? Look, is that what we're gonna become? High-rises? No family community? Because that's what's happening and taxing right under your noses and us, the old folks, that raises our taxes.
Any other comments? Please go up to the microphone.
Hi, my name is Jan Kassar. I live at 7711 Wilcox. I'm the one that the house is the closest to. It's right on top of my house. I used, I've lived in my home for 38 years. I love my house, or I used to love my house. Now I'm considering moving because of that house. It is, I have all my shades and blinds pulled down on that side of the house because I can see the workmen in there, so that means that they can see me too. That means when a family moves in there, they'll be able to see everything, so I'm very happy. I, it bothers me a lot. I, every time I like go out to my garage and I see all the deck and all the stairs and the party deck on top of the garage with the stairs going up there. and the party deck on top of the garage with the stairs going up there, and it's just like, what, what's going on in our neighborhood? It's, it's very depressing. I, I have some questions. I had left a message with somebody at Village Hall. I was wondering what the code was for a sidewalk in relationship to the property line. The sidewalk that was just poured on Saturday is a half an inch from the property line. And I'm not saying anything's going on. I don't know what's going on, but I saw some bushes, like, leaning up against the property. And I'm hoping that they're not planning on putting it on my property, which is right next door, because it's very close to my property. They don't have room to put a fence. So my theory is, and I could be wrong, and I hope I am wrong, but my theory is they're gonna put some kind of tall shrubbery up there to have, like, some privacy there. And that means it's going on my property, and that's not gonna happen. So I hope something comes of this. I, I don't wanna move. I, I just, you know, I'm just very unhappy and very disgusted with the whole, the way the whole thing has turned out. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else? Then we'll close public comment, and we'll come back to the commissioners. Paul, you okay?
So I think, I mean, I've tried to come into this with an open mind. And I, I guess my major question, and maybe this could be explained by you, Steve, or someone. I read it, you know, I read the why in the newspaper, but I wanna hear kind of, how did this happen in the first place? How did this get approved?
Yes.
Okay, I'm happy to address this. This was what was characterized as a ministerial error in the review process. And to address Mr. Keating's concern about precedence, all new construction. Previously, it was new construction for commercial or multifamily. It was referred to a third-party planner for all pre-construction activities. We have since changed the internal policy that all new construction, every new construction, is gonna be referred over to our third-party planner. You know, moving forward, we're looking at making a significant change to the zoning code in probably January or February. But simply put, I misinterpreted a single code, which drilled down, does allow for new construction on twenty-five-foot lots under very specific circumstances. I should have reviewed that code before, but I relied on past experience with that code, specifically with renovations, with non-conforming either uses or structures on twenty-five-foot lots. I should have, I didn't, and I'm taking my lumps for it. And that's what brought us here today.
I, you know, I think I set it off mic, but I will fully admit, I absolutely live in a non-compliant home. My home is, I think, almost exactly what we're talking about here. I have three foot from my one neighbor, I have two foot from my other neighbor. My porch is too close to the sidewalk in front. My lot is, my house is larger than the lot that, you know, I'm, I'm supposed to have. I think it's probably about forty-five percent, which is what your kids are asking for. So I live in this house, right? Unfortunately, my house was built in nineteen oh five, right? So I, it was not two thousand twenty-three. And so I, I, I completely empathize with the neighbors and the folks in this. Especially, you know, I think some of the construction on seventy-seven thirteen is a little out of character of the neighborhood. The siding is, you know, the, the metal siding. You know, I've seen, I've walked by it a few times, just to kind of like, get a feel for this property. And, because I don't live in that neighborhood now, and it seems like the construction has been a little bit of a mess. I can understand the folks that are complaining about the construction. Like, even today, when they did take down the scaffold for, when they did the siding, the scaffold was in your yard, this, you know, this afternoon. So I, I, I have been paying attention to this since I heard about it. And I understand why people are upset. I just don't know what the relief is. You know, that's, that's the worst part about it. I think, you know, due to an error, we're here, and there's asking somebody to tear down basically a house that exists currently is a pretty tough ask. So that's just, that's, I'm just rambling at this point, but that's kind of where I'm standing, unfortunately. I wish we could go back in time, but.
Carrie? Any questions?
I can call. Set it for most of us, though.
Ryan?
I'm fine.
I have no other questions myself.
Do you want me to read the motion?
Yeah, I have to make a motion first.
Let me get ready.
I'll read it if you just wanna say your.
I'd like to make a motion.
There you go. Would the motion be the one as written, based on admitted petition and testimony provided? I moved that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends to the Village Council approval of the variations associated with PZC two zero two three dash zero eight, to reduce the west side yard setback from three feet to two feet, reduce the required buildable lot area to three thousand one hundred and twenty-five square feet, reduce the required minimum lot width to twenty-five feet, and increase the lot coverage by five percent, subject to the following conditions. The site shall be constructed in substantial compliance with the project documents identified in this report and available in the Department of Public Health and Safety. All construction shall comply with the building code of the Village of Forest Park, with final plans subject to review and approval by the Village Engineer and Director of Public Health and Safety. Three, no building permits and no certificate of occupancy for the subject property shall be issued by the Department of Public Health and Safety to the owner unless all debts owed to the Village of Forest Park by the owner have been paid in full prior to the issuance of such permits or certificate. Four, the variations shall expire one year after passage and approval unless a permit has been issued and construction has commenced within that time period. Any violation of the above conditions will result, I'm sorry, that's number six. Any violation of the above conditions will result in a violation of the municipal code of the Village of Forest Park, and the owner may be subject to fines for each day said violation.
Kevin, I heard you second.
Yes, second.
All those in favor? I'm gonna do a roll call.
I will. Kevin Hibberts?
Yes.
Ryan Russ?
Yes.
Carrie McBride, yes. Scott, wait for this guy here. Paul Price?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Marsha East?
Yes.
Motion passes. May I have a motion to close a public hearing of PZC twenty-two twenty-three dash zero eight?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll move on to the second item.
May I have a chair? May I take a two-minute break?
The motion.
Go proceed with the other, uh, task being rung. So the next item is PZC twenty-two twenty-three.
He's doing entitlement for both projects. Who is the motion in the close on the, for the quote, motion in the second?
I think I seconded.
I made the motion.
For the, to close the.
Oh, in the close, I'm sorry.
Close.
Okay. And second?
I think Carrie's the second one.
Did you load it?
I seconded.
All right, fine, I need to, I don't know.
Next item will be PZC, you got what you need to do?
We need to back it up.
All right. PZC twenty-two twenty-three dash zero nine, request for variation eight thirty-eighth Circle Street. May I have a motion to open and enter the packet into record?
I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Commissioners, we will have a petitioner, same individual, John Cheese, give a presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gonna be brief, because some of the topics are similar. The client is not, the applicant, and the builder is Patrick Buckley. I am here for the approvals only. It's worthy to note that the architect of Rattner is somebody that I've worked with in the past. My office and I have had conversations with him, and I can share those as part of testimony. Similarly, we had discussions with staff, and the process, as we see it, will result in a vote by council. There is a little bit of a difference here in lot size. It's twenty-five feet by a hundred and twenty-four feet, six inches. Little narrow, but the current zoning is an R1. We're proposing to keep at that. The proposal is for a single-family home and two parking spaces in the garage. This data is a little different and a little more impactful. You can, we surveyed a total of, we surveyed a total of forty-one properties, and ninety-three percent of them were non-compliant. So going back to the map, the blue represents non-compliant or non-twenty-five-foot lots. The orange show the compliant lots, and the subject property is in the green. Here, they, there's, I think staff report is more accurate than my relief request here. We are asking for relief to go from twenty-five to one twenty-five, twenty-five, fifty to twenty-five. But there is relief for side yards. The code requires three feet, and the applicant, through their architect, requests two and a half feet. Here, unlike on Wilcox, they centered the house because there was enough adjacency. Unlike ours, where we had one too close, we shifted it. They chose to put it right down in the middle, and that's for six inches of relief on each side. The standards for variation are very similar. We submitted the site plan, we relied on the zoning ordinance, the zoning map that we showed you, and the location map, actually, the zoning map we put in the packet. But we're calling the location map this one here, that's here. And the general hardship is the same, through the same action as happened on Wilcox, happened here. I think there was a really good exhibit in the packet, which took a whole look of the entire R2 zone and R3 zone. And you could see, well, while it might have made sense back in twenty-ten, I think this, and Steve, correct me, this may be the first test of that, when, yeah, after twenty-ten, thirteen years, it took to kind of flush out this out. Unique physical characteristics, the same as on Wilcox, the twenty-five-foot lot, really starts the whole process of leading to hardship. Not self-created. Again, this applicant recently bought the property, and so therefore had no role in creating the hardship. Denied substantial rights. Again, a tour of the neighborhood would show that all those properties that are shown in blue have single-family homes. Some, to my eye, and mailboxes are actually two flats in there. Again, compliant at some point, not compliant now. That's not what we're here to talk about. Again, not pointing fingers, but just looking at what the impact was when the rezoning was done. Yeah, again, forty-one properties, ninety-three percent of them non-conforming. That, that says a lot. And I just found out today that this may be coming to you in January for a zoning relief. So that, as, as one of the folks said, in front, you know, when they, you know, this is gonna set a precedent. And you know, the precedents aren't things to consider, they're not in the standards, but they are something in back of everybody's mind. You know, if you let this person do, why not let it go on? Well, I think the village has already taken action for that and set up hearings for looking at twenty-five-foot lots that are not compliant and choosing a path for compliance. Special privilege? So again, this applicant is not looking for any special privilege other than what's enjoyed by ninety-three percent of the other neighbors in the area. We, we don't have testimony on this application. We were hoping to, but the applicant didn't supply one. I, I can tell you, by my experience, and I do this quite a bit. I think those of you that know me know that I do a lot of entitlement work in the Village of Forest Park, Oak Park, neighboring communities. I've yet to see when a development like this, that doesn't change the density, only changes and doesn't change the use. I've never seen a negative impact on property values. That's the best I can tell you, and you have to take it from somebody who doesn't have the appraisers' credentials. But that's been my experience. Again, light ventilation, in this case, the six inches is not going to impact the light and ventilation to neighbors. You would have to have something, and again, as an architect who does this quite a bit, we, we have been on zero lot lines and had to step back at a certain height to ensure light and vent. And I can tell you that in my conversations with the architect, he and I agree that this would not have a negative impact on light and ventilation. Traffic? The traffic, again, going from single-family to single-family, no additional traffic units, traffic counts. Flooding, again, the FEMA map is similar here. There's, you know, you can look at a FEMA map and see if any part of the X-zone touches the property corners, and if it's not. Essential character of the area, public utilities. So in this case, there were, the water and that, and sewer are there, they were unchanged. However, the use is unchanged, so our estimation is that there's no negative impact on the village for that. Whoops, sorry. Sanitary capacity. Now, this, the engineer for the architect checked, and they tell me that there's adequate sewer. And these things, because this is retroactive, we have the benefit of an engineering review that said, oh, you're, you have a single-family house with this many number of plumbing units, and you're connecting to this size sewer, you're good. So that permit has already been issued. So health and safety. Again, this, this structure is compliant with upgraded water and sewer connections. Those are all good. The gas and electric, all new. Again, looking at health and safety, the things that could fail on a home that could make it a fire hazard or any other kind of hazard have been upgraded. And so that's why I point them out as code compliant. And the sprinkler system, not the least of which is. I think I made a long position, no other remedy, excuse me, no other remedy. The same holds true with this one. They would have to essentially buy in the lot in order to make it compliant.
Excuse me, repeat that last part. Essentially, you have to buy, I didn't hear that.
Buy property. Uh, buy property from an adjacent property or some land in order to, um, make it compliant with fifty-foot. I can leave here and, uh, more questions or comments?
Commissioners? Members? Questions, any questions? It's opened up for public comment. If anybody wants to ask me anything, again, please go to the microphone, your name, your address.
I'm in White, I'm in seven 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 Wilcox Street, Forest Park. My concern is that what you're proposing on Circle is similar to the monstrosity that I'm looking at on Wilcox. It doesn't reflect the charm that Forest Park has, why not? Yes?
You're welcome to answer that or not.
Public comment?
Just comment, yeah.
Thank you, I, I, I heard that, thank you.
Any other comments? Please come up to the microphone. Your name and your address.
Uh, my name is Bonnie Eldredge, my address is eight thirty four Circle. Uh, my question is, I've been listening to you before now on the fourth property. And what I want to know is why, I didn't really get any clear declarative, clear reason why it wasn't caught in the beginning, but now the building is up, uh, the first one agrees and then you're into the second one. What, who caught the error? And, and why wasn't it caught earlier? I mean, how does it, how does it happen that something just happened to catch it, but, you know?
Errors happen, I think, I think we already heard that testimony.
There was an error, I understand it, but what I'm saying is, is that, uh, who catches it? Is it when they're going over the plans or, I mean, it's already built, how did it, how, why, how would anyone catch it? There must have been some significant point that all of a sudden somebody said, hey, and then they, you're probably hearing for it. Or is this just sort of a formality? Final answer?
Can't answer that, man.
Yes, I'm, uh, Yula Brown, and I'm at seven seven eighteen Adams. So this is my first time, I'm a little behind in the process, but if I'm hearing correctly, uh, based on the, um, uniformity code that we have or the non-comforming code that we have, 'cause I'm on a block where you can tell that it's very diverse. So respectfully, based on what's transpiring right now, is something being done? Are we, uh, hearing approvals of, um, zoning or, um, for lack of a better word, I'm, I'm looking in terms of lot sizes. If I sold and my building came down and I did not have enough space, I would have to come and petition for you to, uh, accommodate the builder in terms of a new property going up? Or is there something being stated that will go on the route Forest Park? 'Cause there's, uh, a lot of properties that are not, are not, uh, compliant. I, I live next door to, uh, the, the properties on my block, they're different in sizes. And every now and then you can see some, um, what is it? Uh, oh, you know, you're infringing on one piece or another piece. And I'm just concerned that what's going on today could possibly happen based on the age of the properties. You know, if it's an old property, if you can, if a fire happens or whatever, you have to build again. And all of a sudden, you can't build based on you're not having adequate space to build. Or you're gonna encroach on someone else's property, get the property back up. So you're trying to say, is there a question in it? Yes, I'm just wondering when, uh, who's making the decision to make the change? Because when I'm hearing in terms of Wilcox, the change is because it was an error. There's a lost, uh, property, either west or east of the property, based on what you thought in terms of in and out, the ingress and ex, uh, exiting of property. And number two, my concern would be based on, for health reasons, if there was a fire and recognizing that we should have so much space for your, uh, emergency vehicles or personnel to be going through your yard space and so forth, was that addressed or it's no longer, it can be changed? I'm looking at this random change process, if I can say that. So is there a way you can comment and just clarify a few things since I'm only new or you don't have time? I hear a lot shaking.
Well, no, I think you're getting into a lot of things that are well beyond the, the purview of this committee. We're an advisory council, so I think if you have a lot of building questions, I think you should ask the building department.
So that's, that's, you know, I got my letter and I just wanted to be, uh, clear in the direction to take because I am still concerned, if I'm not mistaken, the vote is to go ahead and allow, um, the transgression, or the error, I'm sorry, the error that transpired on Wilcox. That's moved forward and now we're just trying to make sure that Circle can get the same response correct.
We haven't voted on Circle yet.
But we're, we're looking forward to, or potential to get that correct. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I might just address the issue of rebuild.
Sure.
Okay, there is a provision in the code under the, uh, non-conforming structure and uses section that does allow for rebuild of non-conforming uses, non-conforming structures, um, if damage greater than fifty percent or, uh, uh, damaged a hundred percent by fire. Now, he, I, I say this only because since the housing crisis, lenders have become acutely concerned about, uh, rebuild rights and the sheer number of non-conforming properties has, has forced us to amend the non-conforming section so that people have these things because if you don't have rebuild rights, you can't get a mortgage, you can't get a refinance. So yes, if your building is damaged and it's non-conforming, it can be rebuilt.
Any other questions or comments from the public?
You're all good, eight forty-four Hannah, um, I was just curious if it's not specifically related, um, to either of these projects, but, um, I live fairly close to the Circle project and yet, um, I've been here since nineteen eighty-six. Um, when they wanted to put a seven-story building, um, where the Roos factory used to be, the first proposal for that, I never received any notice on that and yet I got a notice of this meeting as far away that, as I live now. Um, same distance and yet now I got the notice and before I did not. Has the, the notice radius changed from previous? Can someone answer that?
Are, are, is it your complete comment?
Pardon?
Is that your complete comment?
Um, one other question, um, I, um, the previous house that was there was actually built across what is now two pins. Was that divided after the structure was, um, torn down? Because, I mean, if, if it hadn't been divided into two pins, then a, a single house could have been built on that fifty-foot lot.
Are, are you done?
Yes.
Uh, to address the first que, uh, the first question, uh, the notice area has been the same for as long as I can recall, two-hundred-and-fifty feet. I have no explanation why they didn't receive a notice for, uh, the Roos development, uh, I'll blame the U.S. Postal Service. Um, the second issue of.
I wasn't the only one who didn't receive any notice in my town.
The, the second issue, uh, again, was.
The subdivision.
Oh, the subdivision, the, the lots have not been subdivided. I think it's reflected in the staff report that the subdivision re, regulations don't require it because it is two separate pins, they get two property taxes for that. Now, that property specifically was a fifty-foot lot with a single structure that was destroyed prior to two thousand and five. In fact, when the code was changed in two thousand and ten, for some reason, they attached that two thousand and five date. And I, you know, most of you probably won't recall, but about three months before that two thousand and five date, um, uh, the structure was destroyed by fire in total, uh, leaving two empty twenty-five-foot lots.
So you're saying that the original structure, the one that was destroyed, was actually on two pins?
No, it was on one lot. There's two lots, there's lot one and lot two, both have, both have a pin, both receive a, uh, uh, property tax bill.
But that was controlled by, but it was one house, you're saying?
It was one house, but it was two lots. So they, it does not need to be subdivided.
I, I know that, but well, so it has always been, had two pins even though it only had one house on it?
As far as I know, yes, it did, it certainly did before the fire.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Any other comments? That's right.
Happy evening, Mary Iselhard, seventy-six, with two on Wilcox. I wish any more about.
Excuse me, what is your name, ma'am?
Mary Iselhard.
Spell it, please.
I S F E L H A R D.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you since you're wearing a mask to please speak well.
I haven't been sick in a long time, so I'm digging the mask. I'm assuming that we have the building codes for a reason. If, if nothing else, then for aesthetic reasons, walking through River Forest or other towns, green space makes such a difference than being like my neighbor with a house to match against her house where it's gonna be pointless to even open her window at so close. So I'm just, to me, it's like if the lot is small, build a house that's appropriate, a smaller house for that lot instead of giving the builders free rein. I know they want to get their money, but at some point, let's consider the residents and how our town looks because, I don't know. The green space just, it makes a big difference, being able to open your windows and get in air and having a nice yard, so. It's kind of uncommon, thank you.
My name is Tracy Melbeck, and I live at eight thirty four Circle. And I only had a question on the pins, or at least I wanted just to clarify, someone had a question on the pins. I was looking into just seeing the value of my home and there was a lot of confusion with the pins. They were coming up every time I would pull up my property, I would get a picture of the vacant lots. So I talked with a realtor who told me it was very unusual and that there were, both of the pins that were on that property were coming up at my address, eight thirty four Circle Avenue. When I called the builder, when I came in and talked with the builder here, he told me mistakes happen. So that's confusing to me because now, when I did talk to a real estate attorney, just because I want a clarification, if I'm selling my property, why is it that my PIN number is being assigned to the vacant lot? It didn't make sense to me, and it still doesn't, and I don't know what kind of error happened, but it's very confusing. It just seems very fishy that there's all these errors that seem to be addressed after the fact when the building is already up and constructed, I find that just unusual. I really don't know. And then when I did talk to someone, they said, you weren't paying on the additional, you weren't paying any additional property taxes, so why do you care? Which, I mean, is frustrating and I guess I don't, I, I do pay for my property, I just paid my taxes today and I'm not really sure how that works. So I'm not, you know, I don't know what happened or where the error came in, but when, when it was asked about, you know, those two properties always having two assigned pins, that's a bit of a stretch considering they were being pulled up at eight thirty four Circle on my property for some reason, for some. And that's pretty much all, I mean, if, you know, if that means anything, you know, that's all it has.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if you'll indulge me, uh, that falls completely outside the scope of, of, uh, what's before us tonight, but I did, I believe I did spoke to, uh, speak to the, uh, Mrs. Melbeck. Uh, there is some confusion on this property. I've, I've got legal records that show it as eight thirty-six, I've got legal records that show it as eight thirty-eight. Um, I can assure you that issues with how the county handles their accounting, um, are not a rarity. Um, and this is not a slam on the county, the county has a lot of properties that they need to track. Uh, with respect to the addresses, that's one of those things that I will address with the postmaster prior to, uh, finally assigning the, these things. And obviously, it's up to the petitioners to make sure that everything is kosher with the county. So you, you have my word, we'll get that, we'll get that addressed.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Commissioners, any questions?
No, I just do want to confirm, Tracy, you're right, you have three pins for eight thirty four Circle Avenue in the county records. It's, it's actually true. Uh, I would look into that, it's a very odd thing. Uh, somebody that does property records stuff all the time, I've never seen that before, so. No, I, I, I keep with my comments from before, I, I really wish this, uh, would have, you know, been brought up before the house is in its current condition. Um, uh, yeah, that's, that's, that's all I can say.
Thank you. Karen?
No.
Karen?
Good.
Right. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, he'll read it.
I can read it. Alright, based, based on the submitted petition and testimony provided, I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends the Village Council approval of the variations associated with PZC, PZC two zero two three dash zero nine, to reduce the side yard setbacks from three feet to two-point-six feet, reduce the required buildable lot area to three thousand one hundred and twenty-five square feet, and reduce the required minimum lot width to twenty-five feet, subject to the following conditions. One, the site shall be constructed in substantial compliance with the project documents identified in this report and available in the Department of Public Health and Safety. All constructions shall comply with the building code of the Village of Forest Park with final plans subject to review and approval by the Village Engineer and Director of Public Safety, Health and Safety. Three, no building permits and no certificate of occupancy for the subject property shall be issued by the Department of Public Health and Safety to the owner unless all debts owed to the Village of Forest Park by the owner have been paid in full prior to the issuance of such permits. Four, the variations shall expire one year after its passage and approval unless a permit has been issued and construction has commenced within that time period. Any violation of the above conditions will result in a violation of the Minnesota Code of the Village of Forest Park and the order may be subject to fines for each day of violation.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, we'll do Wilcox.
Um, Kevin Hibbits?
Yes.
Ryan Rush?
Yes.
Uh, Karen McBride, yes. So, no, I bone's not here, Paul Price?
Yes.
Rush East?
Yes.
Alright.
May I have a?
The eyes have it?
Yes, they do. May I have a motion to close a public hearing of PZC twenty twenty-three dash zero nine?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we're adjourned for the evening, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.